Grant our elected officials discernment to make decisions that reflect the best interests of all our citizens, considering especially the needs of the most vulnerable among us. May all of our hearts be open to diverse perspectives and our actions guided by justice and compassion. We pray for unity within our community that we may work together to build a better future for all. Although you are ever present, we invite you to be here with us now with your power and your love. You know what we need even before we ask, and in your mercy, give to us what we most need now in this place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. And may we now offer a moment of silence to all of those who have paid the ultimate price to protect our city and our nation. Thank you all. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present, excluding Councilmember Ross Hammond, who is out of town on business.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Okay, the vote will be open?
One second. That is open.
All righty.
Councilmember Ross, can I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, thank you. This is a time when we get to honor those in our city who deserve to be honored. The first one is Dr. Douglas Doc Concrete. Remember with the, please come forward with your family? Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Okay, and we're going to ask Worth Remick to read it.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Concrete family. It's a distinct honor and pleasure for me to read this resolution on behalf of City Council. What an incredible life that Doc Concrete has led in our city, as you'll soon find out in this resolution. Thank you for coming forward. You're a great role model for all of us in our city and our region and our country. Resolution: Whereas Dr. Douglas Concrete, affectionately known as Doc, moved to Virginia Beach in 1956, establishing a medical practice that would serve the community for decades. Doc is now ninety-nine years old and was married to his beloved Sue for seventy-four years. And whereas Doc and Sue's six children all attended Frank W. Cox High School, Go Falcons, and later returned to serve as educators within the Virginia Beach City Public School System, reflecting the family's deep commitment to their community. And whereas Doc delivered over seven hundred babies in Virginia Beach and was known not only for his medical expertise but also for his dedication to inclusivity. He was the only white doctor at the time willing to deliver non-white babies, and his waiting room was integrated well before civil rights law mandated desegregation. And whereas Doc served with distinction as a decorated U.S. pilot during World War II, flying the Corsair and the F-6F Hellcat. And shortly after Cox High School opened in 1961, Doc began his lifelong association with its athletic program, serving as a team doctor while attending and supporting various sports events, including football, basketball, and his favorite sport of wrestling. And whereas Doc performed countless sports physicals for high school students across Virginia Beach, charging minimal fees and donating much of the proceeds to schools' athletic funds. He started out charging one dollar, then moved to five dollars a fee, and with a four-dollar donation back to the school's athletic fund. In later years, he charged twenty dollars with a fifteen-dollar donation back to the school. It was a very charitable service that he enjoyed. And whereas Doc also completed all bus driver physicals in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools for nearly fifty years. And whereas, as a medical advisor to then Superintendent Dr. Edward Brickell, Doc advocated for and succeeded in establishing a medical trainer at each high school, demonstrating his dedication to the health and safety of student athletes. And whereas Doc was the first wrestling coach at Frank W. Cox High School, and his contributions to the sport led to his induction into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. And whereas Doc was invited twice to serve as a team doctor for the Olympic Games, an honor he had to sadly decline due to his demands of his solo medical practice here in Virginia Beach. And two more whereas is whereas Doc was invited twice to serve, I just said that one, so it's one more. Whereas Doc continued to contribute to Virginia High School League as a consultant until his retirement, making many medical contributions to the health and rules of school sports across the state. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Virginia Beach, that the Virginia Beach City Council formally honors Dr. Douglas Doc Concrete for his lifetime of exceptional service, compassionate care, and dedication to the community of Virginia Beach, celebrating his enduring legacy as a healer, mentor, and advocate for generations of students, athletes, and families, given by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, nineteenth day of November, 2024, and we present this resolution duly signed by each member of City Council. Congratulations and thank you.
Just a couple more comments about the great Doc Concrete. On behalf of his four daughters who are here with us tonight, and his two sons who couldn't be here, and our extended support family here tonight, we thank you for this honor. It's really nice. Worth, thanks so much for prodding me for the last year to get this done and doing this for Doc, because he certainly deserves it, and we're really very proud of him. You know, the resolution says it all, a lot of, why is it, whereas is? But Doc was a doctor to so many, and everybody knows him. You know, we take turns taking Doc out to dinner at night, and for all of us, my nights, Tuesday night, Hayes and I take him to Doc's side, and there'll be three or four people that'll come up and say, you know, you were my family doctor, my entire family, and he doesn't remember half of them, because he was a doctor to a lot of people way back in the day. But it's very rewarding and very nice to hear those comments. There were a few family doctors back in the day, and Doc was the least expensive. I mean, when I first started dating Hayes, I went in there, he's charging like ten or fifteen bucks for a visit. I'm thinking, he needs a little more margin here in this business, but that's the way he was, just wanted to make sure he took care of people. So he'd work during the day. At three o'clock, he'd go home, go to wrestling practice for a couple hours, shower, and he'd go back, because he had night hours, four or five nights a week, because he wanted to be available for the working-class people who had jobs during the day and wanted to be able to be available for them at night. So those are special traits, and Doc really had it. And the reason why everybody knew him, because Worth said it, he delivered over seven hundred babies. The guy was amazing, really was. He was a true fixture at Cox High School, he really was, and the medical care for athletes that he helped in talking Dr. Brickell and the folks into getting medical, what do they call, you know, the trainers, you know, trainers at each school. He was very influential on that. He worked hard with all six children, and you know, he worked so hard, he got all six of them, well, he didn't, they did a lot of the work, but they all six got scholarships to college. You know why that was? Well, their talent, of course, but Doc didn't want to pay for college. He made sure they all got a scholarship for college. So Doc is, he's part of that greatest generation, y'all, ninety-nine years old, the last of them, so proud of him, and so glad to see that y'all honored him here tonight. It means a lot to our family, so thank you very much. Yeah, let me say this, Doc. What makes Virginia Beach such a remarkable city are remarkable people like yourself. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you. Okay, next up, we honor another hero, Jerry Yagan and his family, and you know, people come on right up. Yeah, Jerry, then his honor is for you, and I am privileged to have, you know, Barbara Henley read the proclamation honoring you.
And I'm privileged to be able to read it. I will sit so I can be at the microphone, because we want everybody to hear it, but it's certainly not because I don't have the greatest respect for Mr. Yagan and all that he has been able to put together. That makes the southern part of the city one of the most visited places in the whole state, and so I am really honored to read this resolution. Whereas Gerald Jerry Yagan, a native of South Norfolk, Chesapeake, attended Virginia Tech, and in 1969, at the age of twenty-three, founded a recruiting and headhunting firm that placed military veterans into technical roles in defense industries. This successful enterprise led to additional ventures, including defense contracting, temporary staffing, printing, and a training school designed to upgrade veteran skills in digital electronics, a foundation that eventually grew into the nationwide network of Centura College and the Aviation Institute of Maintenance, the largest global trainer of FAA licensed aircraft technicians. And whereas, as a lifelong pilot, Jerry learned to fly in college and developed a deep passion for aviation, often flying with his wife Elaine and their two children to distant parts of the world. This love of flight inspired him to establish one of the largest collections of operational historical aircraft, which evolved into the Military Aviation Museum located in Virginia Beach. And whereas Jerry's vision and dedication led to the creation of a world-class museum with a mile-long turf runway and a sixty thousand square foot museum space, as well as multiple hangars and relocated historic buildings from around the world showcasing vintage aircraft from the first fifty years of aviation history, including iconic models such as the P-51 Mustang Corsair and the Messerschmitt BF-109. And whereas, in a most remarkable act of philanthropy, Jerry Yagan has generously donated over one hundred million dollars to the Military Aviation Museum, a gift that includes seventy historic military aircraft, the museum property and buildings, and an endowment of thirty million dollars to ensure the continued operation and preservation of this collection and its role in sharing military aviation history with the public. And whereas this donation represents one of the largest charitable gifts in Virginia's history and underscores Jerry and Elaine Yagan's commitment to preserving and promoting aviation history for future generations. This monumental gift was announced during the museum's annual War Birds Over the Beach Air Show and received high praise from Virginia Governor Glenn Youngkin, who expressed gratitude to the Yagan family for enhancing the cultural and educational landscape of the Commonwealth. And whereas Jerry Yagan's passion and commitment to aviation preservation have inspired a team of dedicated staff, docents, volunteers, and a supportive community who continue to advance the museum's mission to keep them flying, providing educational experiences, flying demonstrations, and interactive opportunities for over eighty-five thousand annual visitors. And whereas Jerry's vision has transformed his collection into a vibrant, accessible museum and a resource of learning, serving as an inspiration for young aviation enthusiasts, students, and the broader public to engage with military history. And whereas through this donation, Jerry has laid the groundwork for the museum's ongoing growth, preservation of aviation artifacts, and expansion of educational programs, ensuring that the museum will remain a vibrant part of Virginia's cultural and historic landscape. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, that the Virginia Beach City Council formally honors and expresses its profound gratitude to Gerald Jerry Yagan for his profound contributions to aviation history, education, and the Virginia community. His dedication to preserving these historical aircraft and sharing them with the public ensures that the legacy of military aviation will inspire and educate future generations, allowing the people of Virginia and visitors from around the world to experience the flight of history up close, the history of flight up close. Be it further resolved that this nineteenth day of November, 2024, be celebrated as Gerald Jerry Yagan Day. And you now have this resolution that's been signed by all members of City Council to remember that this is your very special day, and we think, thank you for this wonderful, wonderful gift to the city for Virginia Beach and its future. Thank you so much, Jerry. You do a wonderful job, and all of these folks out here.
Please stand up, volunteers, friends.
We are so thankful and now honored to be recognized by the wonderful city we have called home for fifty-four years. Thank you. We appreciate all the behind-the-scenes work the City Council and all the committee have accomplished to make the city so beautiful, safe, and welcome. You have developed and cared for many places and have a great place to live and to visit. Now we look forward to the future of our city and the community. We look forward to working in the city in the future for many more years. Thank you in this wonderful city that all of us live. Thank you.
And Jerry, you know, it's often said that Virginia Beach is a city of heroes when we look at our public safety, when we look at our proud military, but it's also people like yourself that, you know, just do so much to improve the quality of life and make Virginia Beach a destination that so many people want to come. And what you have done is magnificent, and let me just say, with these fine folks, the legacy will continue. And thank you for, and God bless you and your family for what you have done and will continue to do. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great city, it's a great place to live.
And because of people like you, you got it. Thank you.
Wait, I just wanted to say, I'm a former board member of the Military Aviation Museum, and it is a remarkable organization and group of people that come together. You see all the volunteers, but also the board members, that they absolutely, with Dr. Ed George here, and what they've added to this community, it's just priceless. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have a proclamation, or recognition of the Native American Heritage Month proclamation, and Chief Emeritus Lee Lockamy from the Nansman Indian family, could you please come down? Lowry?
So Chief Lockamy is unable to attend, but we have.
With the three gentlemen in the back, you all come down.
Anderson, Chief Anderson. And if you each will introduce yourself at the end of the proclamation, that would be great.
Yep. Okay, and I've asked my friend and colleague, Chris Taylor, if you would be so kind to do the honor on this.
Chief and family, welcome. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Proclamation: Whereas the indigenous peoples of Virginia have provided stewardship of her lands and waterways for many millennia, and whereas members of the Chesapeake Chieftain resided in village settlements in present-day Virginia Beach, and whereas an expedition of English settlers from Roanoke Island spent the winter of 1585 to 1586 with the Chesapeake Indians, and whereas the Jamestown settlers encountered indigenous people soon after coming ashore near Cape Henry in 1607. And whereas the Chesapeake were exterminated or removed from this area by orders from Powhatan around the time of the arrival of these first permanent English colonists in the region. And whereas some members of the Nansman Indian Nation, which may have been somewhat independent of Powhatan's Paramount Chieftain, settled in areas formerly occupied by the Chesapeake, and whereas the English demanded a chain of pearls as a sign of peace from the Nansman in 1608. And whereas there is documentation that a Nansman Indian reservation existed in the seventeenth century in southern areas of what is today Virginia Beach, and whereas present-day members of the Nansman Indian Nation trace their heritage to the 1638 marriage of Elizabeth, a daughter of the King of the Nansman Nation, and Nathaniel Bass, an Englishman. And whereas November was first declared as Native American Heritage Month in the United States of America in 1990. And whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has commemorated November as Native American Heritage Month since 1996. And whereas the government of the United States of America officially recognized the Nansman Indian Nation in January 2018. And whereas members of the Nansman Indian Nation continue to be vital members of the community in Virginia Beach today. And whereas Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the American Indians who call Virginia Beach home, whose abilities and contributions strengthen our economy, enrich Virginia Beach's diverse culture, and invigorate the city's communities. Now, therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 2024 Native American Heritage Month. And Virginia Beach, I call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Virginia Beach to recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history and development of the city, state, and nation, and to commemorate this month with appropriate activities. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the official seal of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this nineteenth day of November, 2024. Congratulations.
And gentlemen, just go up one by one and introduce yourself, please.
While we're on the way down.
Good evening. My name is Keith Anderson, and I am the principal chief of the Nansman Indian Nation.
My name is Michael Cloud Butler. I'm of the Chippewa tribe. I'm a friend of the Nansmans. Thank you.
My name is Cameron Anderson. I'm the chief, I'm the son of Chief Keith Anderson.
and again, our nation is proudly looking forward to working with the City of Virginia
Beach for years to come, and again, we look forward to a bright and prosperous 2025. Have a good evening.
And thank you all for being such a vital part of our community. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to some city business, public hearings, the first one. Acquisition of agricultural land preservation, AARP Eastman, installment purchase for one hundred point three six acres located at the 5700 block of Blackwater.
There are no speakers.
All right, number two. Acquisition by agreement or condemnation, Hornet's Sienna Pump Station Project, CIP one hundred five nine nine.
There are no speakers.
All righty. Number three, acquisition by agreement or condemnation, Eastern Shores Drive Drainage Improvements Phase One, Section 1B, 1C, two, ID and IE Project, CIPs 10150, 10153, 10167, and 10538.
There are no speakers, sir.
All right, and one more. Acquisition by agreement or condemnation, Elizabeth River Wetland and Floodplain Restoration Project, CIP 10551.
All right, there are no speakers.
Okay, at this point, I will read the speaker's script. I want to remind everyone that the City Council's speaker policy that allows certain representative of groups to speak for one, ten minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is to strive for civility and respect. Are there any single items signed up, Madam Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, at this point, can we do the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, when we did the agenda review this afternoon, failed to mention that number nine, which is the ordinance to appropriate $30,531 and $524 for reversion funds to the Virginia Beach School Board, they have asked us to defer this because they're going to rework it and have some other priorities, and so we're going to be deferring that to December 10th. So if there's anybody who would like to speak to that, let us know now.
So number, under ordinance and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to declare a portion of city-owned property located along the north side of Indian River Road to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with the Catholic Diocese of Richmond, Virginia for 9.7 plus or minus acres of property on Salem Road. Number two is the ordinance to declare vacant property and adjacent to 245 Realty Lane to be in excess of the city needs and authorize the city manager to sell the property to an adjacent property owner. Number three is the ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property of temporary and permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation, Ray Lynn Haven River Basin Ecosystem Restoration Project Phase Two Wetlands Construction, CIP 10263. Number four is the ordinance to grant a franchise agreement to Virginia Beach Horseback, Inc. to operate guided horseback riding tours on the beach in the resort area. Number five is the ordinance to grant two franchise agreements to Me Vida Virginia Beach, LLC and Grill Virginia Beach, LLC, Ray Outdoor Cafes at Atlantic Park in the resort area. Number six is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a franchise agreement to East Coast Ballet Company, LLC for the use of portions of public right-of-way at Town Center Ray Ballet Services. Number seven is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building One, Space Three and Four, Ray Chapman's Flowers, Inc., DBA Chapman's Flowers and Gifts at the Farmers Market. Number eight is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for city-owned property at Virginia Beach Farmers Market, Building Six, Space One, to Lisa Prouse, DBA Lisa's Tinker Treasures. Number nine is the ordinance to appropriate $30,531,524 from the FY 2023-24 School Reversion Funds to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools FY 2024-25 Operating and Capital Improvement Program, CIP requested by the school board, and this is going to be deferred until December 10th. Number 10 is the resolution to support the Artery District as a unique section of the city, providing us a mix of restaurants and cultural appropriate opportunities, and to authorize the city manager to take actions to support requested by council members Berluki, Hudson, Remick, Rosham, and Rouse Schulman, and Taylor.
Over to public hearing on planning.
And it's just one item that's on consent is number two is the ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016, Ray the Local Road Safety Action Plan 2024. Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, let's open the vote.
One second. The vote is open. Mayor, may I have your vote, please?
There we go.
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, now, the first planning item, Catholic Diocese of Richmond, City of Virginia Beach for Conditional Use Permit, Ray Cemetery directly east of 3168 Indian River Road in District Two.
The applicant's attorney, Eddie Burdon.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, Member of City Council. It's a privilege that I have tonight to come before the council for this application on behalf of the Catholic Diocese of Richmond. Deacon Ed Handel has come down to be with us tonight from Richmond, and Billy Allman, who is with WPL, the engineering firm that's handling the cemetery work, is also in, present tonight at this council meeting. The application was recommended to the Planning Commission by your planning staff with nine conditions, and your Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this application subject to those same nine conditions. I'm not certain as to the opposition, there was no opposition, just a concern expressed by the neighboring church at the Planning Commission hearing, and some additional landscaping has been provided for. It's one of the conditions of the of the use permit that's coming before you tonight. I would simply ask to reserve the opportunity to rebut the comments. I think everyone is very familiar with the application. If you have to answer any questions now--
Any questions? Yeah, Rose, Mayor.
And is this going to be like a memorial park, or is it going to be one with tombstones, or?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to be like a memorial park?
Yes, it's a cemetery with the mausoleum and cremation, all, it's going to be very park-like setting, they're going to plant trees, lots of landscaping, the, from the existing Indian River Road north, there is a very large BMP, about three and a half acres, there's a reservation of a 125 or 150-foot right-of-way for the future relocation of Indian River Road, and the cemetery at its closest point is approximately 350 feet from the existing Indian River Road. At its farthest point, it's 700 and some odd feet from the existing Indian River Road. I understand that the speaker may have something to do with the property across the street, Bridle Park Lane, I think is what it's called, and the nearest house in that subdivision is approximately 100 feet from the existing Indian River Road, and there'll be the big BMP, and eventually there'll be a new Indian River Road, and the existing one will be a local, you know, access road at some point. I'm not sure when that Indian River Road relocation will take place, but it's in the CIP.
Thank you. I'm sure other people appreciated your explanation.
Sure, thank you very much.
Go right ahead. I think if we have any questions, I can ask you in rebuttal. Okay, thank you.
We have one speaker, Bill Mackey.
Good evening, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is William Mackey. I reside at 616 Spence Farm Court, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23457, and I'm here on behalf of my friend, John Fittro, who is that property owner that resides across the street at 3701 Bridle Path Lane. He's been there for 30 years, and he's very passionate about his property and the city and everything that goes on here, so he really would like for me to speak on his behalf. I come to you in peace and in three capacities. First, on John's behalf. Secondly, for those same almost 30 years, I've been a humble servant of the City of Virginia Beach, and I'm proud to say so. Third, I'm a City of Virginia Beach taxpayer, and I consider myself a steward of the City of Virginia Beach tax base. Across Indian River Road, there is a concern about the devaluation of property. The research we've done, the property could be devalued just by facing the cemetery upwards of 25%. I'm going to give you three data points as a servant to the City of Virginia Beach that may lead to some different conclusions. One, I did a project here in the city that there was a dry cleaning spill, and that dry cleaning spill, the city bought the piece of property unknowingly and ended up with hundreds of thousands of dollars of remediation that went into it. Second data point is there was another project that impacted a cemetery, consequently enough, and that cemetery had buried in it folks that suffered deaths from the Spanish Flu, and that set everybody on edge, and this is pre-pandemic. And the third data point I would like to supply is that there are several studies, both internationally and domestically done, that demonstrate that formaldehyde leakage and casket remains contaminate, have and can contaminate the groundwater table. We who live below the green line count on our clean water and septic to remain appropriate. So if the project proceeds as planned, there's three requests that John has made. One, that not only the church be screened, but the properties across the street in that subdivision, that community be screened. I don't think that's unreasonable. Two, that just compensation is considered for those pieces of property prior to us assuming it. And lastly, that the groundwater monitoring wells be installed and monitored in perpetuity so that we can make sure that there's no plume that migrates into the community, whether it's the church or the surrounding properties. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to take them now.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, then.
I'm sorry, I did that quickly. So when you're talking about screening the properties across the street, can you be more specific?
Either with a berm or landscaping, some sort of landscape buffer would, I think, be appropriate. I think that was done on the church side. I don't see a reason why that same thing couldn't be managed on the property owner's side.
So maybe it's down on the side where the cemetery--
That faces, yes, that faces Indian River Road.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Good, Michael. Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Mackey, as a follow-up to the other matter that you raised, which is the monitoring of the well and groundwater. And I think I may be familiar with the case that you cited about the toxic plume related to a dry cleaner. And then it was seeping in toward a cemetery, if I recall, or towards some other areas, but are you aware, I just want to, I'm just trying to understand your request better, is there something related to toxicity in cemeteries that we should be aware of that I may not be aware of beyond the Spanish Flu reference that you shared?
The formaldehyde leakage, for every 50 pounds of a person, a gallon of formaldehyde gets implanted in their carcass, and casket remains also have contaminants in it that can get into the groundwater and the aquifer and contaminate that groundwater. So that's the biggest health concern, but from a property valuation and from a screening concern, those are the other two requests.
And this is a new territory for me, so just help me understand, are there cases that you could point to or instances that you're aware of where formaldehyde has seeped into the surrounding area? Because I believe, my understanding, rudimentary as it may be, about cemeteries, I believe those are reasonably encapsulated. I'm not saying leakage--
In my limited research, I have found dozens of cases where that can occur, and especially now that there's the natural burials that are taking place without any caskets, that even becomes more significant of a concern.
And in that case, I don't think they use those chemicals, but I'm not diminishing your concerns or the person you're representing, I'm just trying to understand it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Burdon.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Mackey and his representation of his friend, and appreciate his comments. The first thing, as far as if it is desirable, the diocese is certainly willing to plant a row of evergreens on the north side of Indian River Road, which would be between the BMP and the existing road. We have no aversion to doing that, if that's the desire of the resident, excuse me. As far as the monitoring, it's, Deacon Handel is somewhat familiar, but it's not a situation that they intend to permit in terms of having a problem. However, however, if staff looks into this and briefs the city manager and there's a belief that that's something that's necessary, the diocese is not averse to having a monitoring well, just to be a good neighbor. The just compensation scenario under Section 57-26 of the Code of Virginia, our state legislature has dealt with that situation, and 250 feet distance between a residence with an intervening state road is all that's required, and we are way above that. So that's not a condition, there is no compensation, there is, there's no, anyway, I'm not going to try to get into argument about it, but we satisfy that section of the state code and then some, because there'll be two roads and a BMP in between.
Okay. Mrs. Henley?
Okay, just to confirm a couple of things that are being required, and I hope this would satisfy the concerns, this is a total 11.44 acres, and the stormwater facility pond will take 5.38 acres, so it's left with about actually six acres of non-stormwater pond area.
If I could, that's a total of the stormwater pond and the right-of-way reservation that get to that--
Oh, okay, the stormwater pond, oh, right, okay.
But the number is correct, that's all the acreage before you even get to the cemetery.
And part of the road reservation, because what they are doing, according to our plan for the future Indian River Road, Indian River Road in the future would come through this property, and so you all are agreeing that you are going to, at the time that that road dedication is necessary, you're going to dedicate it to the city at no charge.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And so that will be in the future when Indian River Road is relocated, and so with that portion and the stormwater, that will be using a little over five acres of the site, and it will leave just a little over six for the cemetery.
Yes, ma'am.
And there is a requirement that additional evergreen trees and shrubs shall be installed and maintained along the last 300 feet of the western property line to adequately screen the interior of the cemetery from the adjacent property at 3168 Indian River Road. So there will be landscape screening, but it will be on the cemetery side, because we could not put screening on private property, so we couldn't screen the other side, but we will be screening the cemetery property.
And we are, Mrs. Henley, we are also, the diocese is willing to plant screening on between the, where the BMP will be and Indian River Road, which would be between that residence's home and the, it'll be north of his, the opposite side of Indian River Road that it currently exists, but it will be before the BMP and before the future road. And I think that's what Mr. Mackey was suggesting, that they'd like to see screening on our side of Indian River Road, and that's something that the church is willing to do, either on, close to Indian River Road as it currently exists, or where the right-of-way will someday exist for the new Indian River, whichever one they prefer.
And so the planning staff will address this at the time of site plan review and to make certain that the screening is in place, as you have agreed.
Happy to do that.
And as far as the impact of the cemetery on groundwater, there will be a lot of concern if that were a fact. I think we would have been hearing about it, but if we do, you said that you would have no problems, but I have a feeling that we're not going to find that that's been an issue in Virginia Beach, not that I have ever heard, anyway.
Nor I, but if city manager and staff do some research, we've got to go through, it's a number of months before we get to the point of this happening in terms of actual construction and approval for the cemetery. If it's deemed-- If it's deemed to be a concern that's significant enough, the city manager said, you know, we'd like us to put in a monitoring well, the diocese--
Well, if you find that out, you better tell us, because I think we're going to have a lot of concerns, but I'm really not thinking that that's going to be a problem, because in all these years, I've not heard of any problem in this area. And I think that covers the concerns of the applicant, and you've got all of these conditions that you are going to follow and make certain that this is a nice-looking place that is going to be of service, but not a problem, I think, to the people in the area. We've just not experienced problems like this with cemeteries anywhere else, and they've been here a long time. Okay, thank you very much, and with that and those conditions, I move approval.
Do we have a second? A second. I need a discussion.
One second.
Let's open the vote.
Give us just one second, please. The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to zero, you've approved the application as amended.
Thank you all very much. I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any appointments? No appointments? Okay, any unfinished business? New business. Thank you all, we are adjourned. Thank you.